I will take roll call for the open workshop. It is 6:04. Trustee Cruden is absent. Trustee Desmond?
Here.
Trustee Finnerty?
Here.
Trustee Gerillick is absent. Trustee Luanda?
Here.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Willback is absent. President Broderick?
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent because we have some presentations.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first report that the openings met extremely well. We visited various schools of middle. Lopez, we spent time in the classrooms and monitored arrivals. Buildings were clean, staffs were energetic, and every school was well-prepared to welcome our students to the new school year. Excuse me, we were very, very pleased. Additionally, I toured the high school almost every day. Everything was orderly and safe. I found instruction in progress, orderly change of class, and adherence to the uniform program. It was evident that the process of teaching and learning was occurring in the classrooms. I've also been at the high school dismissal every day to monitor the egress of students and staff. I met with the police and have assigned an extra patrol person on 30th Street, which has been a tremendous aid to our dismissal process. In fact, two days ago, I think Mr. Bacarella can attest, we exited the students off-campus in about eight minutes, in an orderly, safe fashion. Our business office consultant, Mr. Brian DeLucia, attended the finance committee meeting last night to review the operating budget manual. Mr. DeLucia will do a PowerPoint presentation on the new budget process to the full board at the workshop meeting before our regular board meeting next week. In addition, Mr. DeLucia is working closely with Brown &amp; Brown on the medical options. We are hoping an initial presentation can be made to the finance committee first in October. As you recall, over the summer, a committee was formed to explore a student information system to potentially replace real-time. We have met with various stakeholders. Each subcommittee is recommending the use of Genesis. That's a program we've been looking at. This evening, Mrs. Renee Bush, Director of Student Personnel Services, will discuss how Genesis will assist in student scheduling and give you the opportunity to see the parent portal. She has experience using Genesis not only as an administrator but as a parent. So I would ask Ms. Bush if she would address us now.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background about the Genesis program. Kenneworth converted into the program, my former district, and I was instrumental in that conversion. I timed out again. Hold on a minute. So I am familiar with the program in a parent capacity, which I'm going to show you because I know a lot of parents are going to ask about the parent portal. I cannot show you the administrative end because we won't have access to that until we actually purchase the program, but I can talk to you about scheduling because I have done the scheduling module as well in the Kenneworth district. But before you can understand what Genesis can do, I kind of have to explain to you a little bit of what I have to do now using real-time so you understand the comparison. And anybody who schedules knows it's a big puzzle. So what I did is I printed, this is two students' requests in color, and I have to do this for all of my kids requesting AP level courses for singletons, the Italian Three Honors, the French Four Honors, any of those courses. And I color-code them, then I compare them, and I physically, on a piece of paper, map out, like a big puzzle, the best period to put these classes so there are no conflicts or the minimum number of conflicts. Okay? Using Genesis, that whole process is eliminated because it's all computer-based. So now, as we put in student requests, which Genesis will allow the teachers through gradebook to actually go into their gradebook and recommend them for the following year, it populates into their course requests, and then the master can be built from there. Now, this system has two modules for building a master. It has a master schedule builder and a student scheduler. The master student scheduler, or the master schedule builder, will do this for me. It will compare them and tell me if I put this class, Period Three, 98 percent of the students who asked for it can get it. And then, it runs the sched, you run the scheduler, and the kids funnel into all the classes. So as far as a scheduling output, it's much faster, more efficient, and definitely, Dr. Wonko gave me the directive, he wants schedules out before the end of the school year, and Genesis would actually make that happen at a much quicker pace. Okay? From the parent end, let's just get back in. I live in South River, so the South River School District uses parent portal, and I can tell you that I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader. My eighth grader has been stalking this website since she's been in sixth grade. That's when it opens up to them as a middle school. So she knows my login and my password. It's on her phone. She monitors her grades as she goes. If you ever forget your password, there is no more phone calls to the computer room, no more phone calls to the guidance counselor. Right at the bottom, you forgot your password, you log, click there, and electronically they tell you what your password is. So with that being said, I log in, get to see my kids. So one great feature that we can set up is you can have a parent account with all of your children linked in one site. So I can monitor both children and their grades from one tab, and I can alternate back and forth through here who I want to look at. Okay? So I'm going to, I know Kaylee's grades because I looked at her social studies teacher. So I click on her, and this is what I get for right now. These are her grades as of right this second if she were to get a report card. Okay? But I want to know what her homework is for the week, so tell me, what does she have due? All these numbers, two, three, one, that's what she has due. On Monday, she had two assignments in English and math. Tuesday, she had three. Wednesday, she had one. If I don't want to do that, if you click on this, it gives you a breakdown of every single assignment. There it is. That is what was due for the week. This is what she was graded on. Okay? Then, let me go back a screen. You can drill into any single course that you want to look at. I'm going to look at social studies because I know her social studies teacher. Put in grades. Very specifically, he names his coursework. Now, we're going to have to tell our teachers to be specific like he does because some of the teachers in her class, in her, in her school, just called them, I don't know what Spiral One is yet, Spiral Two, Spiral Three, I have no idea what these things are, but they count as something. So the more specific we could be, the more knowledgeable our parents will be, and that's just something the directors can tweak with their, their teachers, but it makes life that much easier. So now, we're looking again at all of her grades. They tell you what it is weighed as, as far as the category. They tell you her overall grade. In science, I know in particular, the teacher did not, the teacher lost because my daughter stalks her grades and said, "But I turned in my safety contract." She said, "You're right, you did." And what used to be here as an MI, the grade was changed. But you always see what the previous grade was. So it was indicated as missing, now the grade is in its place. Genesis has even more as far as the parent portal is concerned. If you take a look at these tabs, and we can customize the tabs as much as we would like them. This is all South River allows the parents to look at. I can actually take a look at Kaylee's attendance, and I know she was late on the 15th because she had an orthodontist appointment, but if she was cutting class or cutting school or whatever, it would show up here. They do have discipline, so all those discipline referrals, letters, attendance letters can all funnel in here. Again, she, she better not be getting any discipline, but it would show there if she did. But more importantly, I can actually take a look at her report cards. Since sixth grade, these are all of the report cards and progress reports that she has had, and at any point in time, I can click on the icon and I can pull up her report card. I can pull up her marking period, progress report. So parents have access. We never make it go away. You always have a good idea of what your kids were doing and, and where they're going. Now, there is a component for forms, and we did discuss this also in our committee because I can sign off on parent forms. All the district has to do is decide which forms, upload them. We already discussed, I believe, Corrie and Tom discussed very openly about needing things specifically signed, not just a checkoff, and it's been guaranteed by Genesis that we can offer that option. I'm not sure there, if, this is the brunt of the program, what parents will see. Specifically in social studies, let me search. She has everything. All coursework, all coursework, search, is he going to show me? He has already listed, this social studies teacher, this is every single class, everything listed all the way out to here, social studies till November. That's why I said CP4. I have no idea what that actually means, but it's due November 13th, or she'll be graded November 13th. So you can monitor everything, and we could regulate with the teachers if we want them to hide some things until it gets closer to November 13th, or if we just want parents to know everything. But that is the portal in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions on my end as far as scheduling or what the parent portal would look like, how we could possibly use it?
Just one question on that.
Sure.
Renee, with regard to assignments, like in the high school for us, participation, classroom participation is weighted a certain percentage. Test, flummie, I mean, yep. Does that show up there in any case, like say, the participation grade is, what's it now, Dennis? Like 20%? Oh, there you go, on the bottom, I see.
And it can, yes. And you can regulate this by department. You can regulate this by school. I know some teachers might want to assign by points, some grade by, out of 100 percent. So some of her grades are 100 out of 100, others are, she got a seven out of 10, which equates to a 70. It doesn't matter. It all calculates, that's what we do on the back end, and it'll calculate out the way we asked it to.
So it's, so the percentage, the weight of the grades is as per class? For example, public speaking, participation is huge.
Correct.
So your percentages might vary there.
Correct.
Whereas, say, in math, formative assessment, that's pretty weighty. You know, a student can sit on his hands in a math class and still do extremely well. So participation grade. So we have, my, my question is, have the ability with Genesis to change the percentage per course based upon what the course is about?
You can. The, on the back end-
It's very customizable.
On the back end, we can give teachers different roles, different administration, get up different roles. One of the things we can allow the teachers to do is to, within their gradebook, we could set all the math classes to weigh the same way, kind of like they did here. All the music classes, this is how they're weighed. Now, if you have any specialty classes, like a public speaking, okay, or another hands-on type of class maybe over in vocational under gate, those classes might be a little more hands-on, they would have more participation that way. We can allow them the ability to customize their rank and their grade by percentage, and that's easy.
Also by level. Oftentimes, we have students who are like 100 percent, they do every homework assignment, and yet, they can't really seem to pass the class. But they're putting the effort in, but the progress is not indicated by an assessment. Can a teacher, based upon level, do a percentage? Say, say you have a, you know, a child at risk, you have, you know, not child, but say you have a class at risk, and you really would like them to become more involved and put the effort in the homework, so-
So you weigh the homework a little more.
Right. And your next period is a higher level.
So you can regulate that, and what's really great about Genesis is when you set up the gradebook, let's say I teach three Level As and two at risks. When I set up my gradebook for my at-risk, it'll automatically roll into the other at-risk class, so I only have to set up at-risk one time. And then my Level As, when I set up that gradebook with all the weighting, the same thing, it will roll over to all my Level As. As long as they're the same course code, they'll be able to roll that way. But yes, you could customize based on level, based on course, anything that you would like to-
That's great.
Yeah, that's great. What else do you have as far as questions?
There's the, I'm sorry, go ahead. There's the attendance, I see it says attendance. Is that also included, lates? I guess it would.
It would, because like I said, here is, here, she was absent, she was late, she had an 8:30 dentist appointment, so she came in late with her note, and she is an excused tardy. She has one tardy, it was excused. We customize this as far as the colors, so maybe you want the absences to come out in red or tardies to come, this, this we completely control. We could have as many tabs as you want it to say.
And how about ranking in the high school?
What about it?
I know it's a big problem. Would that show up here, or would it help with that?
They're only in the middle school, so I can't show you transcript, but at the high school level, the transcript would be available, and we would have the option of turning the ability to see the rank on or off, or the transcript on or off as well. Yes.
So on the parent, I say patient.
Parents.
Because I use it for patients. On the parent's side, it's a read-only thing, and the only way it's interactive is possibly with some forms that need some kind of signature.
Now, now it's-
Which I would worry about, I would worry about. But on the teacher's side, once it's set up for the year, there would have to be some approval process if they found that during the course of time, they need to change something because it's not working the way they thought. But they can arbitrarily change on their own?
It depends on what you gave them the rights to.
Those are roles.
Yes. But I will say this, I, I use this page a lot. So I look at their, my daughter's grades. I emailed the teacher the other day because that science thing was missing. She followed up, and I didn't have to search for an email. All I did was click on the email icon, and it pops right up, and I can communicate, and she communicates right, they come right back and forth. So if I have any questions, it's all right there. Okay? And there is, in, in this specific school district, they have a parent portal only. We have the ability of having a parent portal and a student portal, so those signature things would be parents only. If we wanted the students to have the portal, they wouldn't have any ability to see any forms whatsoever. And that's, again, all included, and it's how we customize the program.
That's one of the, one of the, I don't know, measures that some teachers use, like let's just say your daughter was missing a homework assignment.
Mm-hmm. Oh, my, my one daughter did. She does.
Well, then, this would be an avenue for your daughter to write-
She don't care. She checks it all the time. It's on her phone. This is what they do. Go ahead.
But it would be perhaps an opportunity for your daughter to write, "I was missing the assignment because I fell asleep," or "I left my book at home." Some teachers, what they do in the high school level, especially if you're doing your all-time and gradebook, when you're checking, you will ask the student to write the date and the assignment missed.
Missed.
And why you missed the assignment. It could be due to a death in the family, or had a fight with my mom and left the house, whatever.
Yes.
So there's an avenue that the student can write an explanation as to why perhaps an assignment was missing, is my point.
There, there is. And you know what, as, let's say as a science teacher, you want that safety contract back, or you want to actually just, you turned in a contract, you ask the parents to read off your rules and regulations, they return it back and sign, and all you just want to do is log it. You're not counting it as a grade. You just want to count it as, yes, they turned it in. So, yes. And you can put it in there, and it's not a graded class, piece of work, but it shows up in their list of coursework.
But you did receive it, yeah.
So that, yes, you did receive it, and it's there. Morgan, her very first homework assignment, she missed. She's new to the middle school. Homework was written on the board, she missed it. It was a Friday. Elementary school never had homework on a Friday. Why would she think in middle school she would have Friday homework? She learned very quickly. She got a zero. That zero, she made, I make my kid make up her missed work. She made it up. She still has a zero, and it's there. My other daughter, if you look at her, let me go to music, here are her grades. Now, you looked at her attendance already. You saw she was tardy once. I have the teacher here saying she was absent twice. She was absent twice because she leaves school early certain days, and the teacher's able to note that she was absent, but she still was able to make up the work. So they can put in annotations in there, so me as the parent, I know exactly what happens.
The, you were talking about scheduling.
Yes.
So at the end of the year, everybody's going to go home knowing what their schedule is for September.
That's what Dr. Wonko has asked me to do.
Not the teachers.
Correct.
They'll know the course and the period.
Period. Maybe not even the room, we'll discuss that.
If they know the room, they might know the teacher.
How does that, is there a possibility with this, because obviously the computer's doing it, nobody else is, is there a possibility that somebody could not get into a class because you only have 15 people allotted to that class, and number 16 rolls in? How does this system, or how do we handle that?
We set seat size in each class.
Yes. There's a lot of-
Up to us.
There's a lot of information on the back end that you would have to do for the first time implementation of scheduling. You would have to go into every single class and say who the teachers are that could teach that biology class by cert, what your class size is, what the rooms are, and you'd go through that way. And that way, it would tell me which periods, I could even tell it. I only want them to teach five periods, and I don't want three periods in a row, and it'll build my master that way. I could put any parameters in that I've asked it to. The thing is, once you put it in the system, I could roll the master over from year to year and just make minor tweaks versus rebuilding it from scratch, which is what I'm doing right now. So you can actually say, and I would be doing this when my counselors are meeting with the students one-on-one and selecting classes, because right now, they're still going to have to do paper registration because we don't have Genesis yet. Next year, we're hopefully going to have the teachers just go right into gradebook, put in those recommendations, and be done. But I would be in the process of setting up all those parameters ahead of time so that when I have to hit run scheduler in March, April, it automatically starts building.
Next question, along those lines, you mentioned the grade, the gradebook. How secure is this? Who's responsible for the security? Because somebody's going to try to play games with this.
They said, even today, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, they did say today that they have an extremely secure system. We're supposed to be using their network. We're not housing it internally, but they have, they pride themselves.
And they have never been hacked into yet.
Well, yeah, that's fair enough.
Dr. Wonko asked that question today.
That's what facts can you ask about that?
That's, yep.
I asked that today, but I've worked with this company for over 30 years, and they have not had a problem yet, as I said. Could something happen? Sure. But they take every safeguard, you know, they use the industry standard and then some. Plus, they make all the changes that the state requires-
I was just going to say that.
-without even contacting the district. When the state makes a change in a policy, they automatically put it into their system for your reporting purposes.
There are so many options to this program that real-time can't offer. Right now, when I have to order AP tests, I have to go in and print every AP class list manually, whereas I can flag it in Genesis and say, "Run me all the APs based on this flag." And all the class lists come up, I can export it right out, and it's at a touch of a button. There's something called dynamic lists, so that your VPs, your deans, your teachers, anybody can create a dynamic list, almost like a watch list. I want a group for the kids who are playing football. I want a group of the kids who are in my forensics club. And, and you monitor, and as the kids transfer in, transfer out, those are dynamic and they're ever-changing. So there's a web desk that I can't show you. I mean, I will be happy if we go with this system, I will happily come in and show you how it works once we have it up and running, because I did the conversion over in Kenneworth. I'm trained in the nursing module, the special ed module, we use Term Style, so now your student ID cards, you actually just scan in, or you type your ID number in, and you check in in the nurse's office, and check out of the nurse's office, and it's instantly reported as to where you are.
Remember, this is only one component of Genesis. We're going to be talking with Dr. Bednich-
Yeah.
... and talk a little bit about some of the other services, but we've had subcommittees that are looking at each of the different areas that they cover. But it would be a one-stop shopping if we went with the whole program.
To piggyback on something Charlie said, what about those students that have requested a course and they're number 16 on a list of 15? They get captured somewhere so that you are aware that they were looking for something, right?
Yeah, I could address that. Well, it's, you-
I guess that I could address that.
Oh, go, go for it, Dr. Wonko.
I was going to say, that's one of the reasons I want the schedules out in June. Now we have the opportunity, do we see, do we have to open up another section? We have that child in during the summer. We have a two-month period where now we can counsel a child, well, here's another option of a course, you could take that is run, and then perhaps the next year, you could be in this course. So you can, you have the ability to make choices in a timely fashion rather than being hit all at once right before we open.
And help them through without them just kind of hanging somewhere.
No panic.
The other piece, the other piece of that I'm just going to add on is, one of the things that we do at the back end is, real-time lets you rank or prioritize your courses when the master is run. So it'll do Level Four first, which will be your AP and your honors, and we designate what's a four, what's a three, what's a two, what's a one. Genesis gives you up to 10. So I can do any kind of breakdown that I want so that those singleton classes go in first. So my, my handful of kids who really need that class would be prioritized first, and then the class that has 20 sections could be lower on the priority list because you know they're going to get in. The other piece of this is, there's the ranking, and the other piece just slipped my mind, and I was, as I was talking, and it'll come back. But, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful program.
Go ahead. It sounds great. The question I had, like, one of the biggest issues I think we had this year, because the reduction of staff and we were trying to commingle classes, what happens if, say, somebody put in for like, I don't know, let's pick up, say, French Four?
Yep.
And we put a cap, the max has, not max, minimum, has to be 15. I think 15 was the magic number.
Number, yep.
Would Genesis be able to generate like a French Three-Four class? Can, can you do it that way?
It's not going to generate it by itself, but I can build a class and say, "I want French Three to run Period Five, and I want French Three Honors to run Period Five." It's going to be the same room, the same teacher, the same everything. It'll be two different course codes, it'll show up on their transcript different because the honors kids get more weight than the regular kids, but I, you could build it that way. Most definitely. Did that answer your question? Because yes, you can. It'll run a report that'll tell me, tell me all the kids that are less than, the courses that are less than 15, and it'll spit that out, and we could say, "Okay, what are we going to do with these?" Real-time did that too, but it's not as easy to acquire.
Well, prompted the question was that I know that some students this year signed up for courses, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, either the course was not run-
Yep.
-or in order to fill the quota in another class, they were not allowed to take the class that initially was their first choice-
Yes.
-and was forced to take a course just to fill the quota.
Correct. I know what you're talking about. I know exactly. And, and Dr. Wonko and I just talked recently about scheduling for next year. If he wants schedules done by June, then on my end, I need to start scheduling right away, and I need a program of study, which I shared an old version with him, and timelines. I mean, I need, I need things to you by November so that I could schedule come December so we can get the ball up and running to be done by June.
We don't have a flow chart on, we don't have what's basically a booklet-
Yes.
-that will have every course listed, the name of the course, how many credits, description of the course, how many days it meets a week, and I'm also asking that we move from a five-credit course will now be one to five credits. So if a child has to leave school mid-year because of a medical emergency, something along those lines, we could issue two and a half credits if they've finished one semester. Why should we penalize that child for the whole year?
The other piece of that program of study is going to outline specifically these types of questions. What do I do with a course that has insufficient enrollment? What is the process? Right now, it's not out there, so there, we really need to put in writing what our policy is going to be so that everybody's on the same page. This is what happens. If it goes below this number, this is the process that we would use. If I know in April that there's only five kids and it's- If I know in April that there's only five kids, and it's not an AP class, and Dr. Wanko says no, and Dr. Deggan says no, then I need to fold it, and now what do my counselors do? And the kids are still in school to say, you five, I'm sorry, not enough interest, here's what I can offer you instead.
Have we run any of this by the teachers? How do they feel about it?
You ran this by the directors today, as far as gradebook, they saw this, they looked at my daughter's pieces, many of them. We had two people in today.
We had three meetings over the summer.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the directors, how about the people who are actually gonna use it? The teachers, no. I think we need to get a little bit of their input. Because if they don't buy into it, it ain't gonna fly.
Quite frankly-
It's gonna fly and they're gonna buy into it. I made an analogy at our open about a big flywheel, remember that story? You have to push hard at the beginning to get it to move. They're gonna have to work a little hard at the beginning because it's a change. But once you get it spinning, it's gonna be less effort on their part to get more results.
It's not that much different than what they're, it's not really, Renee, would you agree? It's not that much different than Real Time. When you're looking at how you do your summative assessment, your formative assessment, your class participation, the only thing that this is showing is attendance, from what I can say, and the ability for comment right on Real Time. In order for us, for teachers, you'd have to go into the email, right, everything's right in front of you, and you have the opportunity to comment right there on the spot.
There's so much more that I wish I could show you, but because we don't have access to the program, I can't. I can generate as a teacher, I could go into my gradebook and I can say, show me everybody who has a, of our passing grades of seventy, I wanna know seventy-five and lower. Why? Because seventy-five, one bad test, one missing project, and they could be failing. So I want seventy-five and lower. Run me the report. I could run a progress report and email it directly and say, here you go, Mom, I'm warning you, I'm concerned. You can't do that in Real Time.
No, you can't.
You can't do that in Real Time.
That's why the reports are separate.
That is not a true progress report. That is a me, as a teacher, weekly checking my kids to see who is not going to produce. I could do this anytime, in addition to a regular formal progress report. They call them progress reports, they call them interim reports, actually, is what they call them when we see progress reports.
The teachers are really going to buy into this and like this because it is a good program.
That's what I'm saying, I'm looking at it.
Have the teachers been happy with the change?
Absolutely, I've worked in the districts where we use it.
And they were happy with the change?
I can-
Well, change is difficult.
Well, I'm not arguing that point, I've been there, done that.
So don't, the question was, are they happy with the change?
But when the process was-
Not at the beginning.
Okay, but-
Once they get into it, they don't know how they lived before.
Fair enough.
We were just talking this morning, I had a very impromptu gathering of some of my counselors, and I said that I had a meeting today with Genesis. And one of my other counselors says, I love Genesis. Her homeschool district, they use it, she's got three kids, she monitors it all the time. And I think if we reached out to a couple others, I'm sure I could find more teachers who are teachers whose schools use it and love it. It's an-
We had a director at the meeting today who revealed to us that when she went to state meetings, everyone would be talking about using Genesis, and she-
She was crawling under the table.
She would crawl under the table because-
Yes.
What does this do, like, at the end of the marking period? Would Genesis, just based upon what the teacher has input, would that generate a report card period? It's like, you know, gradebook, but there are other things that come into gradebook.
There's, there's a, yes, and we can, I mean, I could scan this into you tomorrow if you wanted, then send it out to-
I could send it on.
Yep, send it out to the board members, but gradebook does a lot. I mean, there's the seating, take a part so that there's to, you can do a seating chart. So if I know I'm gonna be absent, I used to, as a teacher, I always had to have my emergency subfolder out. Nothing like a list of names, like, I even know who they are. But nothing like giving my sub a list of names with the kid's picture on it. So now I know not only who they are, but what they look like, and then I could put them in rows to tell you where they're supposed to be sitting. Okay? I can go through and I can color customize my gradebook. I could do it by weight, I could do it by category. There are tons of things that I can do, pass, fail. I can do just, yes, you turned it in. And that's basically what this is giving you, a quick overview of just some of the basic features that Genesis has to offer, that I, again, I can't show you because we don't have, but once we were operational, I'll create a dummy class and show you how to, how to roll it out. It's, you'd be astounded by how much you can do with this program. Testing modules alone, I can click on a student, if I go into my gradebook and I have a list of students, you know, as former teachers, we know, you had to go back to the other schools to see what their assessments were like in the elementary school. Now, it's all gonna show up, my whole class, all their par scores, all the New Jersey Ask or New Jersey Science scores, it's all gonna be listed there. And I don't have to go backwards. I could drill down further into that kid's record, or I could just take a look at the class list as a whole.
And to allay any fears, this is not happening tomorrow.
No.
We're staying with Real Time through the year. We'd be starting our training halfway through this year or earlier if we decide to go with the program. And teachers will have that training throughout the rest of this year, so they can hit the ground running.
That's the next question, though. How much is it gonna cost the district?
We're gonna give you a package, because we have different parts, and I believe when we get to the bottom line of the package, we're about thirty thousand under what we're paying now.
Right, because what I was-
But we're out of sequence now.
Is, we're duplicating services because we have On Course, which I can talk to, which is our lesson planner, our, houses our curriculum and our website sites. So now we're gonna move to one, so we would ultimately move away from On Course and move into Genesis. So that would be part of the savings right there.
When kids transfer between schools, this is obviously gonna be easy. How about when kids transfer out of district or into district? Does that have an effect there?
No, there is no effect, and you're gonna love this even more so, and so will special services, because we can create as many schools as we want within this program. So you can have a pre-registration school, so downstairs, as the new kids are coming in, they haven't quite checked in thoroughly, maybe their immunization isn't right, that we're still waiting, they still get entered in. They haven't gone into a school yet, but they're already in the system. So your kids who are early intervention special ed students, they have their own school. We're gonna run credit recovery, we call it a summer school. You could drill down and make class lists there, you could have transcripts. Every school has its own school, plus any other school we choose. You want a non-public school, you can create a list of non-public kids. Your kids who go to AI, to the magnet schools, to high tech, you can make a list there and call that, so we can track them as well. Post-graduates become a school.
Yeah, you're thinking, just, just as an aside, a number of times I would have a student in my classroom, say sophomore, unless there was a problem that made me go to the guidance counselor, I might not even know that this student was born and raised and educated up until, say, grade six in another country. And it really does have an impact, especially if the student's a freshman or a sophomore. There is no avenue to find that out unless you specifically ask the guidance counselor. It doesn't show up anywhere, it doesn't, you wouldn't know.
Okay, so the way, I'm gonna, I'm definitely gonna have Dennis, I'll scan this in and I'll send it to him, it'll be in color, but I'm gonna let you see this. If you take a look, we have a little friend here, her name's Christine Baker. I'll pass her around so you can see what the icon is. And next to it, you can see there's a little folder, there's a little red cross, there's a little paper pencil, there's all this, there's an orange flag. We, there are certain things that are already customized by Real Time, or, excuse me, Genesis, that are there. But if you have a 504 kit, we create a certain icon, it's only for 504. If it's an ESL kit, we create a certain icon. Now, how will I know? Because when I go into my gradebook, it's all there. And I know she's got fifteen different flags, and this one, if I hover over it, this means that there's a custody issue. This one means there's a medical concern. This one means that they're classified. It's all in my gradebook.
We never had that.
Ah, well, that's because you have Real Time.
Now's your chance.
That's because you have Real Time.
No, we never had that.
How much does the program cost? How much are we paying now?
All right, as I said before, we can buy a lot of parts, or we can buy a package. And I have other programs from Genesis that I'd like to present first before we get to the bottom line.
How much are we paying now for Real Time?
Real Time, I don't have that-
One hundred and fifty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
What was the first number?
One-five-six, one hundred and fifty-six thousand. And Doc, these are the components listed if you wanted to talk.
And what's the basic on Genesis? Let's just say basic.
Well, remember, we're talking about, Genesis does scheduling, Genesis does student management. If, if we're, if you would allow us to finish the presentations today, you'll see some of the other components of it. And then, I thought we, we came to, I think it was like thirty thousand less if we got-
Genesis-
To do everything.
Do everything.
Do everything. So you're saving money in addition to getting better service.
Right.
But I need you to really see all the other components, because it's a very powerful program and it does a lot of different things.
I just might forget the question I had now later.
Right then. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bush?
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Deggan has been working closely with our consultant, Mr. Coleman, on our district-wide curriculum review. In a cursory look, Mr. Coleman stated that the units are uniform and clear, as well as being a strong curriculum. Now, this is very good news for the upcoming CUSAC review that we will be undergoing. We've been meeting with various stakeholders regarding the use of Genesis, as I just mentioned. To complement what Mrs. Bush just presented, Dr. Deggan is going to present some of the items that we went over with the directors today on how pacing guides, lesson planning, and all the other components, not all the other components, but some of the other components would be. Dr. Deggan?
First of all, we're very pleased with what Mr. Coleman, who was independent owner, has been coming in and working with us, looking at our, our curriculum. Because we do know it's CUSAC year, and you know, every month, we do put in for curriculum writing, and we wanted to make sure that it's been reviewed and revised and updated. And then I'm excited that I had the opportunity to work with him. But I think what happens is the teachers really wanna see the fruit of their labors. And right now, what we have is On Course, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but that's where we house our curriculum. So our, we make pre-K through grade twelve, we make the unit plans for, say, grade two math, grade three math, biology, English nine. And what we do with the curriculum is we house it in On Course, and that's where it is. And then that's where the lesson plans are, but it's not very interactive. Now, I, I don't have a presentation on Genesis, because I've only known Real Time for the last twenty-three years that I've been here, so I can't really show you all the bells and whistles. But I can tell you, when I go to an association meeting for, you know, curriculum instruction administrators, like Dr. Wanko said, I hear, I hear about Genesis. So I was glad to work with them over the summer. But we also did vet eDoctrine, which we looked at. And if we went in that direction, that would've been an additional plus. But I said, you know what, if we could put all into the one, by having the directors look at this and working with it, I think this is definitely the way we need to go. So there's two components that, well, actually, three components that I looked at as administrator of curriculum. The first one was Achieve New Jersey, which this also does do our observation evaluation. So we would be able to handle that, which is our student growth objectives and our professional development plans. So, which now we would have in Real Time, we bring it over to Genesis. So, one-stop shopping. The other part is the curriculum, the unit plans that have been created. It does the lesson planning and it does the curriculum mapping. And I guess I would talk to the curriculum mapping part first, because as, in charge of instruction, that's the piece. The theorist is Heidi Case Jacobs, and what she says is that when you prioritize your curriculum, what you wanna do is create a map throughout the year to see where the gaps are. Right now, we can't do that with On Course, and how does it work? Well, I was a science teacher, and I would have a pacing guide. And as I created my lesson plan, if there was a unit on, say, photosynthesis, the light reaction, and I was very comfortable with that as a teacher, I may teach that for, you know, two or three weeks, because I was good at it. Now, if somebody in the department was not very good with the light reaction, and they wanted to talk about Darwin, guess what happened? They did it one day and they moved on. Me, on a higher level, because I have a map, I can now look and say, okay, we can find where is there a hole in the curriculum here? What happened? This is what I'm understanding, right, Renee? That they can do, they can create curriculum maps, and this is something that we would need. And this brings us into, really, the twenty-first century, with what we can do with the curriculum, that I'm, that I'm excited about. It also said, it also links to the gradebook, as Renee did talk tonight. And some of the, some of the things you get with, which I like, is when teachers create lesson plans, there are some teachers that are highly effective, and you wanna share their good work. There is a way, without embarrassing them, to put it into a public library, quality lessons, and I think that's great. And it's by keyword, so I don't know if there's something going on in English, what would be a keyword even in English nine? Something in Shakespeare?
Personification.
Personification, if there was a lesson in personification, as we build this archive, it will be tough the first year, but as we get better at it and we type the personification, any lessons that you did in personification over the years will come up and you can go back. And anything that was a best practice that the director decided that they wanna share will be available. This is highly collaborative and highly interactive, and that's my understanding. And that's what I like. And what we do now is we knock down those walls between the teachers who are working in their silos and we're able to share what's going on through the Genesis. So what I was looking at was the lesson planner, and we were looking also at the curriculum mapping functions. What happens, well, how do you ensure that your curriculum is being taught? There is a way that administrators, supervisors can review lesson plans, we've always had that, provide comments. You can also make sure that standards are linked, and that's the key part. I don't know if anybody sat here during CUSAC review, when they come in, what they want to do is, they hope to, which is what Renee do. They would bring it up, show me the teacher, show me the lesson plan, show me the standard that it's linked to. That's the feedback loop. So those are the things that we did. This is all in the program. So I'm excited about it, I'm hoping that you would let us move forward with this. I do understand, you know, the teachers, but I did ask the directors today, I said, how do you think the teachers would take that? A lot of them are doctors, they really wanna, especially our younger teachers, this is what they do. They can, they can probably manipulate this better than I can, and they don't even need directions. They just experiment, they click through it. So I think, I think this would be a home line for our district right now. And it does incorporate, like I said, observation evaluation, curriculum mapping, lesson planner-
Assessments.
Assessments. There's a nursing tool, there is a-
A web desk.
A web desk, it's the graduation data, NJ Smart pull, pull for assessment, which is very important for me for the park and the New Jersey biology and JES, Renee. Wonderful things that I could do with the student and the parent portal.
Just a question on On Course, haven't, haven't used On Course. One of the frustrating things that I found, and I was just wondering if Genesis would do this, because it would make it much more appealing, even though the flywheel has to be going. But oftentimes, I would have to reference another chart for the standard that would relate to what I was teaching. Is it already in Genesis?
I think that's the best part about Genesis, that the New Jersey student learning standards are already in there, and they're clickable. But what we can also do is, like I said, with our curriculum unit plans, we can import them. So you can not only link our unit plans and your standards, you can also link, what do you call them?
The career-ready-
Career-ready practices. Technology standards. You can also link a URL. If you're doing, you can put in apple.com and that will come up. You can import a test, so you can scan it and upload it and attach it. So that's the flywheel, that you can import the first year, but then it's always going to be there. So we'll have that, that library. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just remember doing lesson plans, I would have a list of the standards here, and they go, okay, which one of these standards goes with the lesson I'm teaching? And I have to go like, okay, R-D four-two-seven-dash-seven-two-four.
It's a click down. And what you can do, as Renee said, you can drill down and say, how many times did I reference that standard? And that goes back to what I was talking about, curriculum mapping, where you could say, we didn't, I didn't reference it. And hence, when you do the evidence statements, when we look at the par scores and we find that something is wrong, well, how many times in the district did we cover down the lesson plan? We forgot it, or we missed it, or we didn't know it was a fourth grade standard. So that's, that's the power of that tool.
And you have the ability, don't forget, Dennis, to do accommodations and modifications also, automatically, also drilled in.
Part of what we have to do for CUSAC is we must provide for our English language learners, accommodations and modifications, our special needs students- accommodations and modifications, our special needs students, our economic disadvantaged at risk, and also gifted and talented accommodations. So we, we have a, there's an opportunity to provide that in Genesis.
The accountability of, I remember like vice principals or directors checking on the lesson plans, that would still be, that's the same.
Yeah, reviewing lesson plans by administrator, by supervisor, comment by plan, by lesson book, by teacher. Teachers are notified by email when reviews are complete. And it's not just a checkbox, you can actually provide a comment with specific, specific feedback for the teacher.
And do you, Larry, can you house like webinar things?
Well, one of the great...
I'm thinking about zero base budgeting.
One of the really great features with Genesis is their ability to support us. Okay, so there are regular recurring webinars that happen, they're scheduled. They have, one of the themes on our end will be, I forget if they call it web desk, no, it's not web desk, it's web, they're webinars. You could go to a pre-recorded or a live webinar on New Jersey Smart uploads or lesson planners or how to use the web desk. So those happen regularly and they have user groups, regional user groups. So you can have the tech department go out or maybe Dawn wants to go out for the math department. They, there are user-related groups and we can even offer to host one and they usually accommodate as well, so that your people could actually attend a P D and then ask the questions. And their support system is unbelievable. It's, it's a help desk, phone call, and, and they're so knowledgeable. So, but yes, they're...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Degenon.
Thanks Renee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the past few weeks, I also conveyed a meeting with the VHS principal who's here this evening, the assistant principals, and the newly appointed deans of students to obtain feedback and to provide support. Everyone seems to be adapting to the new system well. Mr. Baccarella is going to parlay us with an update, review the duties of the dean. He's also going to address the question we had regarding our attendance policy and our plans. If you remember, I had mentioned a few meetings back about changing the culture of students being absent prior to a holiday. Mr. Baccarella?
Thank you very much, Dr. Wonko. As far as Genesis is concerned, I've had no need to go into parent portal for some time right now. However, I can attest to how difficult and how cumbersome the scheduling process is and that would be wonderful for Bayonne High School. I just thought I would like to add that. We are moving along very nicely with our plan of VPs and deans. It's really, has increased manpower. Captain Ryan, if you had fifteen men under, wouldn't you like twenty? Of course. And, and that's really what has, this has come down to, okay? In the packet that I gave you on the top, you can see the, the duties of the deans. The deans are taking over some of the enforcement of the policies that was kind of consuming the vice principal's time. Several years ago, when we went to the Danielson model and the whole observation change, it really almost doubled the amount of time assistant principals were spending in the classroom and, and as they should be, okay? But as a result of that, it became more difficult to manage the simple day-to-day operation of the following policies. As you can see on the, on the dean's duties, they are dealing with lateness to school. That is an issue if you're not a busing district. Lateness to class, that is an issue when you have such a large public high school and you go from Twenty-Seventh Street to Thirtieth Street. Class cut policy. Sometimes students make a poor decision and you have to monitor that policy. Uniform, once we went to a uniform policy, we added a tremendous amount of, of stuff onto a VP's plate because once you say you have to wear a uniform, you have to have consequences if they don't. So it's an ongoing thing that a VP would have to do and that is difficult to do when they're in the classroom. And again, that's where they should be. So the deans have been picking up that part of the VP's duties and so far, in this very short period of time, I can clearly see the assistant principal more visible, being in the hallways more, getting in and out of the classrooms more. And it, in a short period of time, we can already sense success. And I think as we grow with this program, well, what we're doing, we're simply going to get better at it as we go along. Now, the deans also have other responsibilities. The second and third page of that opening packet talks about their monitoring of the building. They have assignments and I've included those assignments there in front of you. There's an entry process. We have a dean inside, we'll have a dean outside. Entry to the school is a little different than dismissal. Entry is kind of staggered, dismissal is, is all at once. But we have coverage now at our doorways where we can have an administrator present as the students are coming in. So the moment they step in, they see their dean. Got your ID? I see the B. Have a great day. And we weren't able to do that because we didn't have enough manpower to get that done, okay? But now we do. We now come in two doors. We have an administrator at each door welcoming the kids coming in, reinforcing the ID policy, reinforcing the uniform policy, reinforcing being on time, and they get that information as soon as they walk in. They monitor our hallways, okay? They'll never be in their office when students are moving about this building. And I have to tell you something and I, I tell this to everybody, walk my walk. Come with me, walk around. When that bell rings, wait thirty, thirty-five more seconds for the stragglers who are going from one end of the complex to the other. It's a ghost town. And I tell everyone, when you judge a school for its control, judge the school during instructional time. Because during the change period, twenty-seven hundred kids are going to make a certain amount of noise, okay? But when they're in their classrooms and you walk around that building, we have deans now patrolling and helping our VPs and we already see a significant difference. Cafeteria monitoring, I've included a schedule in how the VPs and deans work together. Now the VP can monitor two because he has a dean in the other one and there is always an administrator standing in our cafeteria now. So as the students come in, they see that face immediately. And once they see them, they're there. They could disappear for twenty minutes, they may never know it. But when you walk in and see that VP or dean there, I know there's control in that cafeteria. So that is another one of their responsibilities. And of course, dismissal. Adding manpower to our dismissal has made a considerable difference in moving the students. I think our neighbors are a little bit more pleased with our dismissal that, what they see. Some of our neighbors are very, very patient people, but again, we're dismissing a lot of students. So all in all, what the deans have been doing have not only been helping us have better control, but it also is allowing the assistant principals and myself to get into classrooms more, hopefully to increase the rigor of the instructional process. And of course, that's really what we're all about. I can answer any questions on the deans if, if you have them, I'd be more than pleased.
I can only say that from a personal note, that all the topics that Mr. Baccarella discussed on the very top was so time-consuming when I was a VP. And there would be days, I'd be like, it's, it's the end of second period? I didn't get out of my room yet. And, and it was just doing just these things that are on top there. So anything I cut that down would make things tremendous, you know?
If I could just give you one brief example, the student is late to school. It's, it's not crucial. He was late, but he gets detention. He didn't go. So now you got to call the student then. Why didn't you go, oh, Mr. so-and-so, I, I forgot. Were you going to go today? Absolutely. They don't go today. So now you call the student back. Well, I had to pick up my cousin from Midtown School. This is three visits to the vice principal's office for nothing more than a simple late because he didn't do his detention immediately. So as Mr. Broderick said, it is time-consuming. But if you don't do it, the people in the middle go the wrong way. Some students don't follow rules, some don't need VPs because they never break rules. The rules are for the people in the middle and that's why we stress it so much. And I know Mr. Broderick is very familiar with that.
Just one good question on this, Baccarella. When the whole idea of deans came out, I was totally in favor of because, you know, there's just so much fun that's spent on, for lack of a better word, minutia.
It's a great word.
But you know, what we've done is we take teachers who at the end of the day have SGOs, lesson plans, SLPs, grading, all that. Is there a log, is there a record that the deans are required to keep on, like I saw, you know, Miguel Llandy again for the seventh time this week regarding his lateness to class? Is there anything concrete that shows what each dean has accomplished in a day? I'm not saying that they have to write down, you know, at ten fifteen, I went to the men's room, but is there something concrete that we, we can firmly establish, hey, this is what this person has done, not is going to do, but has completed in this day?
Yes. Every time a student does something, it gets logged into their, into their discipline module. If a student is late five times, we can print out, a, a printout, the VP, dean will get it. We monitor the amount of times a student doesn't come with their ID. So we can do a printout every day and show you exactly how many students hit the fifth late, how many students are going to be seen by the dean today. This is the fifth time the student has not come to school with their ID. Students forget their ID. You're going to have X amount of students, with twenty-six hundred, who forget their ID. We don't chop their head off the first time. But when they hit five, they will get a visit from the dean. When they hit ten, it's a, it's a, it's a follow-up visit, okay? And the same thing with our late policy. All our policies have steps, first step, second step. So I can show you exactly what the deans will be doing and what they've accomplished on, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, because everything really is, is logged. And, and when you enter it, you can pull it out in almost any form you want, by any report that you would like. I can, how many sixteen-year-old females were late today? We can do almost anything like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can that be done in Genesis? I know the answer.
Yes, at a hundred times better because now...
Before it happens.
Well, how about this, Mr. Broderick? How many little triplicate pieces of paper do you get on every disciplinary impression you had a look at? You could eliminate the paper because out of grade book, you can actually go in and say, this is what happened in class today. It gets sent electronically to the VP or the dean, however we set it up, and then there's a log of who sent it, when they sent it, what it was addressed and how it was handled.
The old code-coded ones.
To what David was speaking about, because it's a brand-new position, I would be very interested in how we could look at some sort of, some sort of abstract as to how many incidents occurred, say, last year versus this year and maybe the following, because then that would allow you and Dr. Wonko and everybody to, to, to tweak it. For example, how many times did the police get involved in a fight between here and the Boulevard? Last year versus this year? That would be a concrete indicator that it was working or not working. If it's a spike or a drop, you know, and that might take two years. But further, how many incidents of tardiness occurred last year versus this year? How, and then even, even to break it down even further, well, if this dean has got a number way up here and this dean has a number way down there, why did that happen? You know, how do we explain that? So I don't want to burden you with a ton of things and I don't know if Genesis can generate that type of information, but again, because it's a brand-new position...
We could certainly put a report together like that, but you have to understand there will be some variations. For example, the freshman dean is starting with a new group. The senior dean has a group that has been here.
On automatic pilot.
Okay? So there's going to be a difference between those two deans.
Easily explainable.
Right.
So, and, and, you know, again, you can do anything you want with the statistics, but as long as you have them, you can make a reasonable attempt at, well, what is going on and why is it going on?
Correct.
And, and the good news is the senior dean, he has a freshman following year.
That's the bad news. It was so easy this year.
I just have one concern here that was brought to my attention with regard to lateness to, to class. I mean, I'm one of, I'm one of the old people. If you came into class ten minutes after the class started, it was basically, hello, you're not here, you got a cut because it was ten minutes. Oftentimes, I just gave the student the late because then what you do is you give them the philosophy, well, if I'm going to get cut because I'm twelve minutes late, I might as well not go at all. I'm looking at the lateness to class policy. There is no timeframe on what late to class is. So essentially, if a student showed up with three minutes left in the class, he would really just be late, not cutting. I would, I, I really think there don't, time, what is late? What defines late?
Late is late and whether it's a second late or ten minutes late, obviously, if someone comes three minutes left to the period, yeah, the teacher will list that as a cut. There'll be no doubt about it and the teacher, and the VP will support it. The reason we adjusted it, hear me out for a minute. Three lates equals a cut. So you can come to class, one minute late, one minute late, one minute late, you now have a cut. So in the course of nine months, a student can be late nine times for maybe thirty seconds, which is four and a half minutes, and in May gets a WN. He has a ninety-one average. He's been late four and a half minutes total, but he's been late nine times. The policy says WN. Ladies and gentlemen, a WN means we take credit from a student and they don't get the five credits. That is almost a guarantee that they're going to be a five-year student. Because if they get a WN, they cannot go to summer school for it. So the policy was written to enforce being on time to class, but in many instances, it was impractical and it really wasn't as student-friendly as it should be. But the consequences are in place. It is tiered now, just like all our other policies. The late policy was not tiered. This is three lates, this happens, six lates, this happens, nine lates, this happens. There is a suspension involved, twelve lates, this happens. Suspending them for being late is counterproductive. They just get eliminated from activities. You're being defiant, there's no prom. You're being defiant, there's no dance, there's no this, there's no that. I, I understand from a teacher's standpoint of view, some of them perceive that as being weaker than the old policy, but the old policies had flaws in it that hurt students.
And Mr. B, if I could just touch upon what Mr. Ryan, Trustee Ryan was asking for reporting. Remember, we went through the audit for violence and vandalism. We sat with the state for hours and it came out perfect. We have to do that twice a year. So all of our incidents from September to January will be reported. We used violence and vandalism in a past out of state that's got a student safety plan. So we won't be reporting and, and I'm positive that you're going to see a positive change in less incidents at Bayonne High School. You know, just being outside every day, walking through the hallways and seeing all those incidents come through my office in the first three weeks definitely has been nice to see not too many incidents.
I can attest that Thirtieth Street is emptying out very nicely. I haven't taken a run down the rest of the blocks, is what I mean.
We, we do that reporting and we will have that for you in January and we can compare to where we were last September to January and then also from January to June. So we'll have all that information for you.
Just one comment on that. If something happens on Thirtieth Street and Kennedy Boulevard, to my knowledge, that really is not within...
Portal?
Portal to portal.
What?
Portal to portal.
Oh, it's portal to portal?
From the Supreme Court of the State of New Jersey.
Oh, right, we had an issue, okay. Portal to portal. I thought you were talking about like a computer thing. From school to home, anything in that distance?
And anything that happens outside of school, even on a weekend, that has an impact on the school, we have the right to dis...
I was not aware of that. I didn't think that a VP would... A VP would be responsible for something that happened on Kennedy Boulevard and Thirtieth Street.
These are our kids.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, in regards to the late policy, back in the day, I can remember a student receiving lates. And being in a school this size, sometimes you'd be going from House Three or whatever down to over the, you know, Thirtieth Street. So students say, I can't make it. And I would actually walk with them. I'd wait, Bellwood, and we'd be late because of just the twenty-seven hundred students going in twenty-seven hundred directions and the amount of time it takes to get there. And, you know, we'd walk at a good pace, and literally, we'd be ten, fifteen seconds late, you know? So sometimes that helps, and that's where maybe a dean would come in and say that, you know, another person to say, hey, this is the best he can do. And the teacher would know what the best this student can do, you know?
A little disrespect, Joe, seriously.
I have little feet, though, so I didn't get around to that.
You know, I hadn't, hadn't taught there for over thirty years. If the student who's coming from House Six is coming over to House One, there is no teacher who's going to penalize a student if he or she shows up even five minutes late. It's a tough, it's a tough one sometimes. No student, to my knowledge, and, and I know what my reputation was, I would never penalize a student who's coming from House Six to House One. But you come rolling in my class nine minutes late, I want to know where you were for those past nine minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Because for sure, in most cases, you're off to no good.
Don't forget, we get up two people late. But when I walked with that had to go across the whole complex, and the guy that was standing outside the door, he was in the room next door to this room before he came in. So I swear, teachers have to come in, like you said, teachers are going to make those decisions, and, and, and I think that's, that's the important thing. And I think that's possibly why the rule was changed, so that, you know, they have more power in doing so, in, in, as opposed to, well, I got to follow this rule, you know, which would be unfair, I think.
And most, most quality teachers who are great classroom managers and inspire students, they don't have a late problem to class. Like yourself, Ms. Finney. I love you.
No, but seriously, oftentimes, where have they been for the last sixteen minutes? And they'll go, oh, no, I was, they were up to...
I will, I will share with you, sometimes that may hurt a teacher, and I get it, okay? But when the smoke clears and the year comes to an end, those students haven't beaten anyone. Sometimes, sometimes the teacher said, well, they're getting over on us. I mean, he's, but, so I'll speak to the teacher at the end of the year. Student failed four, fifty-six days out of school, a lot of problems at home. He didn't get over on us. He lost the year of his life, and we're trying to prevent that. Any more questions about deans? Now, Doc, you mentioned something about the attendance policy. Would you like me to just briefly, or just answer questions about attendance?
I don't know. If there's no questions you could present, that would be quicker.
Probably would, if, yeah. Do your holidays.
I won't ask a question, I swear.
No one, no one caught that?
You are so efficient in everything you do.
Okay. Very quickly, we'll run through the attendance policy, because it is, if they're not here, they can't learn, okay? So it is the most important thing. The first thing that we do in the policy, step one, comes from this book. We have to instruct the students on what the policy is, why the policy exists, we have to make them understand why the policy is. And you know something? Students agree with our policies. They don't, they're not happy when they're being disciplined at the moment, but they do agree with the policy. So it starts out, we had a freshman assembly today, we did nothing more than talk about attendance, and we talked about lateness, and we talked about all of those things. So we make the students understand the policy. And then at that point, there is the monitoring of the policy. As far as our attend, our attendance policy, every student in this building at ten fifteen in the morning is going to get a phone call with my voice, I recorded it years ago, telling the parent that the child is absent, or the child came in late, or whatever the, the recording says. So each and every single day, we communicate with the parent for every student that is absent. Then, of course, the policy goes on. We have a paper trail. They get a written notice on the fourth late. It says, please call your VP, we have four absences, I'm sorry, not lates, absences, we have four absences for your child, are you in agreement with this? And then another notice goes out on the eighth. You have eight absences, are you aware your child's been absent? Please call the VP. Then another one goes, this is a cumbersome policy, and it takes a lot of time and effort, but it's worth it, because they got to get to school.
If you use Genesis, it might take you less time.
It's got to get to school. Now we send another one out on the tenth day, saying, if your child misses another day, they go for a hearing. Then they miss another day. The child goes for a review, and the paperwork is all in front of you. Child goes for review, the medical department will waive any medical notes that might be on file. The vice principal will waive days like court dates, driving tests, things of that nature, because those students don't have a choice to comply with those things. Those dates are given to them by the courts, given to them by a driver, a motor vehicle, so they had no, a death in the family, they didn't plan it, we waive it, okay? Our attendance rate last year, we finished up with ninety-three percent. That is wonderful for an urban, large district school like ours. And of that seven percent absenteeism, two percent were waivable. Waivable meaning they went to court, they had a driving test, they had a death in a family, they, they had to go to immigration offices, huge, okay? They're waivable days, so two percent of our absenteeism are understandable reasons to miss school. So when you look at that, and if you take the night school out of our mix, we're even going to be higher, okay? So our attendance in general is really very, very good, and we do a fabulous job in getting our students here. And then there is a, a hearing procedure that we go through where the parent can commit and speak of hardship, they can speak of problems in the family. The child had to stay home because the grandmother's sick, she had to go to work. We get all that, and there isn't a thing we have not heard from families struggling getting their kids to school. Many of the English, non-English speaking parents sometimes keep their child home because they're going to an immigration office, or they're going to a medical doctor, and they need their child to interpret for them. It's, it's, it's what is happening in, in, you know, in our district right now. But all in all, the attendance is really quite good. And I'd just like to address what Dr. Wonko talked about, because when we transitioned over the summer, I brought him up to speed on some of our major issues. And one of them was the amount of students taking advantage of various religious holidays. Now, we don't want to disrespect anyone's religion. If you have a religious holiday, they should take it and be with their family. But there are students who are taking religious holidays that didn't belong to their religion, and you can't question them on it, okay? So the philosophy this year, and we have begun this process already, is to change the culture in the minds of the teacher. This is a day to hold kids accountable for work. They have to make it up. You've got a religious holiday, that's wonderful, but the next morning, you, you have a testimony up. Let them know that when they miss this day frivolously, they're going to be behind the eight ball the following day. So it's not a day, well, a lot of kids are going to be absent, so we won't do much today. That is the absolute opposite of what we're looking for. So we are changing that culture, we are driving that home to our teachers. It's going to take time, like Dr. Wonko said, it doesn't happen overnight. It could take a full year, but I truly believe in time, and if we stick with this, we will solve that problem, or at least get it under better control than it is right now. But all in all, I think we should be very, very proud of our attendance rate and the effort that goes into getting our students here, and the manner in which we monitor them, for a school of our size and, and diversity. Attendance questions? I had perfect attendance in four years at Brown High School.
Me too.
Just, just throw that, throw that out.
And I throw this out, when I was an employee here, I had seventeen years of perfect attendance.
Wow.
And I was blessed with health. You didn't have one year?
No. It's called a chronic disease.
As I said, I was blessed with good health. Are there any questions for Mr. Backrow?
I also lift each one of you a copy. This was the 2016 video yearbook that was produced by Mr. Pandillo. You didn't get last year's, because we're, we're copying that right now. But this is a two-hour video of all the activities that go on here at Brown High School. You're going to love it. That's a gift from me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
We now have Mr. Smith, who's going to give us the progress on the Ninth Street property that we've been discussing for the past few months, and update on the prescription plan, and facilities as they pertain specifically to the pre-K grant that we received. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, at finance the other evening, we discussed Ninth Street once again, and the opinions are, are varied, what to do with that vacant piece of property. So the next morning, I went down and I took some photos, not some very good photos, according to people, but just to give everybody the, the lay of the land, so to speak. They say that a photograph is worth a thousand words, so...
Why, do you make it look bigger than it is?
If you pass those around, you can actually see some of the dimensions of the property, and you can see what the property looks like in its present state. So we will bring that back to the full board, for discussion, and, you know, there's some of the thought is to hold onto it, the property values are increasing, others ought to sell it, get the money. It is right now vacant, it is a, a liability waiting to happen if someone should get injured on there. It is uneven, it is growth, there's growth there, there are neighbors that are utilizing the property for their own use, and so it's a discussion that the board can have, and then we will follow up on it. Prescription update, the first week of the new prescription process, I must have got a dozen phone calls every day, every hour, emails, and we addressed them all, and it seemed to work much more smoothly. Last week, up until today, including today, I have not received any phone calls as to people missing their scripts, or their scripts not being filled the way that they wanted them. Is it going to continue like this? Absolutely not. As prescriptions come due, people will run into some problems because of the way the script was written. The help desk at Pro Act has been very, very helpful to our employees, as has Tameisha Smith from Fabview, the broker who came in and talked to you on several different occasions. I've told the employees through the unions and their representatives that if they should run into any difficulty filling a prescription, to reach out immediately to the help desk, and if they don't get the answer they're looking for, to please contact me via email or through my telephone, which I gave to all of them. So we're hoping that it continues to run smoothly. And last, we have identified the rooms throughout the district where we are going to house the new expanded pre-K education. They are at Henry Harris, number one school, Philip G. Vroom School, number two, Lincoln Community School, number five, Midtown Community School, and Washington Community School, the rooms that we will be renovating, okay? Bringing, putting fresh paint and cleaning them up and making them look very nice for our grand opening, which we are anticipating for November first, to have students in those rooms with furniture and everything they need to succeed at that level. Our school fourteen is already in progress, as you know. That is a full-day program, and we're happy about that. And Doc, if I could have one more minute, we have, we sent someone, Dr. Wonko had the vision of the extended feeding program, where we would send food home on weekends to the students that most needed it. So we sent Anissa Dano from Food Services, the assistant director. She went out to an organization the other day that gave a workshop, it's called the Community Food Bank. They serve over five hundred school districts throughout New Jersey, and we will be identifying students on our master eligibility list, those that receive SNAP benefits. SNAP is a, an acronym for Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, and we will be sending our trucks out. We'll start small in two schools, and by small, I mean a little over five hundred students that will service the first time we do it, which will be the weekend of October thirteenth. We'll send our trucks out on Thursday, the twelfth. They will pick up food to give to those students at Woodrow Wilson School and Washington School, and then we will expand the program slowly to include all of our students on the master eligibility list. So we're quite excited about that, and those students will get food for weekends, holidays, and extended break periods like Thanksgiving, teachers' convention, winter and spring breaks. So we're very, very happy about that, and I will keep you updated on that program as we move through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yeah.
I'm sorry. With regard to your old childhood, part of the PEA grant, will that cover the cost, the renovation and all the furniture, everything?
By renovation, I mean we're painting, there's one school we're doing a major renovation in, Washington School, we're taking a room that is quite large, and we are going to put a wall up down the middle of it with two doors for entry and exit, and that's probably the biggest. The rest is basically paint, sprucing up, tidying up, cleaning up, and new furniture, and the grant will cover all of that, yes.
They don't need special plumbing?
We changed, we changed out the toilets.
A couple of toilets needed to be changed in a couple of buildings, the little low boys, they call them.
Yeah, I'd like to have one. No, I was just wondering, so part of the grant, this is not going to come out of the school budget, it's coming strictly, everything's coming from the grant?
Everything, including the labor, if we should have to pay overtime to get these projects out, which we do not envision, that would also come out of the grant, so we're very happy about that.
The master list of...
Master eligibility list, MEL.
How many approximately?
Uh, I want to say a little under three thousand district-wide.
With the meals, how are we paying for it?
We don't...
We don't. Community Food Bank, they donate through, they get donations from, from different purveyors, so to speak, and then they divvy them up into bags...
Okay.
And they'll put a complete meal or something to last the weekend, whatever, and they get them out. We'll monitor too for the first couple of weeks, I'll tell you exactly what went out to those families. So we're, we're very excited about this. You can't go wrong by feeding hungry children.
I forgot that, but, yeah.
Anything else from Mr. Smith? Well, we did a lot of interviewing during the week, and we're doing ten interviews tomorrow, I believe. Mr. Lopez will bring you up to date on that, but he's also, will tell you about the Hudson County One Stop Career Center. Mr. Lopez?
Thanks, Superintendent. Tuesday, we did an interview for the Assistant Supervisor of Special Services. Dr. Wonko will be bringing that recommendation to the Personnel Committee on Monday at one o'clock. Also, we'll be interviewing for attendance officers, and luckily, found a very good candidate for chemistry. So Dr. Wonko will be bringing those candidates, as well as the candidates for our pre-K program. Happy to tell you that five more teachers plan to come off the list, so that list is getting smaller each month, and that's just great news. Last year, President Broder, under your recommendation, we wanted to do something for our graduates, recent graduates, who were not attending college, that maybe be undecided. So we put a letter together, set up a counseling center up at night school, and we did that again this year. But last year, we ran a job fair, which was a huge success. And we do that in partnership with Hudson County One Stop Career Center, who not only, not only do they do that for us, but they do that throughout the county, and that's a great resource for us. Last year, we had over forty employees, employers, vendors, military recruiters, and on a pouring rain night, we had over three hundred participants come in, whether it be our current students, or recent graduates, or residents, and we plan to do that again. So I invite you, Monday at two-thirty, the One Stop Center's going to come in, and we'll be planning that for late October, early November, and then we would like to do that again in the spring. So we're going to try to iron out the plans to have two job fairs. So we hit our recent graduates this fall, and then our current students who are not planning to go to college, we would like to get them working right away when they graduate. So again, that's Monday at two-thirty, and then before that, at one o'clock, we will be having our Personnel Committee. If you have any questions or suggestions, please send me an email. We saw the flyers that went out last year, and we'll be following up. But please, if you have any, you know, concerns about what went on last year, and I think it was a huge success, and I think it's going to be, and be bigger this year, so we'll get that out to you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question. We're, we're interviewing for an assistant super, for the food services?
No.
No, special services.
Assistant Supervisor of Special Services.
Did we have that position from before, or...
It's elementary and secondary. This is a replacement, not a new position.
Okay.
And just so you know the numbers, we had, I believe, thirteen applicants, we did paper screening, interviewed five. The other position is the attendance officer, we had twenty-one applicants, and we're interviewing ten tomorrow, correct?
Yes, Superintendent.
How many are likely to be brought, to be hired? How many positions are really available for attendance?
We're hoping for two.
How many did we cut?
We had one attendant consultant. We had one attendance officer that, uh, we did rip, but, uh, he was bought back, but he, uh...
This was always funny.
Absolutely, yeah, you know, a few years back, we had an extra body in there, so we had some issues that I'd like to discuss in Personnel Committee, uh, because we really, registration, um, you know, so busy daily, and we also need to get out, we have to do investigations and make sure that all the students that are attending our schools live within our city, so, and, Mr. Juan, yes, that is a replacement, um, Mr. Medici, supervisor now, which was appointed last month, she wasn't assistant, left a vacancy, so, uh, if you remember last month, we put someone in acting role, but we posted for it and now we need to fill that.
Oh, so, wait, we put somebody in acting, so that position didn't exist until we put somebody in acting?
No, no.
That was always there, you had to keep somebody to do it.
Sheriff Colistero, um, retired, Kim DeMengey was assistant, we posted, we interviewed, Mr. DeMengey was promoted, leaving the vacancy in assistant spot, and not only now does the Assistant Supervisor of Special Services act in the elementary level for all, uh, needs of our, uh, students and, and, uh, special needs in the elementary level, but, um, that position will be housed, and is housed, at Bailey School, so they will act as the second administrator at Bailey School, 'cause, um, we had an assistant principal there, we ripped that position, now we have an administrator there, that's luckily, they have five days, with that school and the program that they have and the size of it, you know, it's, uh, really nice to have.
And, uh, with the lot, the Ninth Street Lot, uh, what was the resolution asked last month, what did we vote down last month?
Uh, to be able to go out and to put it to open competitive bid.
Okay, that was the resolution?
We have all of the pieces in place right now, from the county and from the state, in order to proceed that way. Dr. Wanko signed a certificate stating that it had no educational value, we sent it to the county, who in turn sent it to the state, the Commissioner's Office then signed off on it, and then, uh, now we can go to the next step, if the board decides to do that.
Yeah, because, like, yesterday, I think, we had the meeting yesterday, or, or, uh...
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm trying to give you, I don't know what...
Yeah, because on Tuesday, we, we had some talks, maybe...
We had discussion, and it was...
Maybe we could develop it.
Yeah, that's why I took three photos to show everybody.
Yeah, but, later on in the future, we might...
But you made a huge liability underground.
Yeah, but later on in the future, we might be able to develop it, we don't know that liability underground.
And to keep it now, we have to be prepared to clean it up.
Yeah.
Didn't we vote that resolution down, though? Was it, I don't know, my memory is sort of, I think we voted, no, we didn't vote it out there.
No, what was voted down, the first time it was voted down, was to even go get permission to...
From the county.
From the county and the state. We got past that...
Now, it's up to the board with control of steps, so that you have the option now of either selling or not.
But we voted down to go up to the county.
Yeah, so, I thought that we voted to sit on.
Then you voted to go.
But the following month, we voted to go?
Yes, when people understood what it was, they voted down the first time.
We gave permission to do the groundwork, but we didn't give any permission to say whether we'd sell it or not sell it.
It was just to have paperwork properly assessed and approved.
Now you can decide and pass a resolution as to whether you want to put it out in public bid or not.
I, I would like to develop it, and, uh, that could be a housing for a pre-K, I think it's big enough and, uh, hopefully it could work.
Well, that would be up to the board.
But why do we want to sell it? Mr. Smith, why, why would you want to sell it?
Right now, uh, if you remember about three years ago, there was a, a garage on the property that we, the, the board then voted to take down because it was a nuisance to the neighborhood, it was packed with, uh, lawmints, rats, vagrants, people were using it for, uh, purposes that, you know, so we took the building down, and then the land has laid fallow since then, and it, uh, there is an oil tank on the land that we would be responsible to remediate and/or remove, Dr. Maida has a copy of the survey.
She really didn't want to go on TV saying, in case anybody was interested in buying it, but there you go. It is the liability.
Oh, there's fifty, fifty percent of the house, they own oil tanks.
And it's landlocked, it's, uh, the only way we can get through it is in easement through a, uh, through a municipal, uh, parking lot right now, it's the only way we can access it. We do have it fenced off, we do have a lock on the fence, uh, I was there yesterday and, uh, it does mean, if you look at the photos, uh, and then look at the survey, it might give you a better understanding of the actual...
One more question, with Genesis, would that be able to actually make payments for, like, cafeteria services and stuff like that?
They, they can, they can run a component that would do that, as well as checkout books from the media center, uh, when you were at the nurse's office, it has a lot of applications.
It's like everyone having a personal assistant that they don't have now, cloning yourself.
If I could move on while you're looking at the schematics, on another topic, today we received a call from the Bayonne Community Bank, they've committed to a $2,500 donation for the Model UN program, so I'd like to publicly thank them for that donation. And that concludes my report, any questions for me? I turn it over to the President?
And I'm turning it over to Dr. Maida. I know how to pass the ball. Some people said I did.
I just realized what you said.
Everybody had a chance to, uh, take a look at the agenda that was sent home, you'll see, we're gonna try and break it up where there'll be three separate consent agendas by committee, for example, and I'll use, I'm gonna go out of order, and I'm gonna go to B, Budget and Finance first, only because they were able to meet, uh, Tuesday night. So what would occur now is the chairperson and/or budget committee member would give a short overview of what happened that night, I wouldn't have to do 16 resolutions all over to the full board. The full board will have the resolutions before a committee meeting, the finance committee would've met, they would've gone over all 16 resolutions, if there was a particular resolution that was a question or a potential problem, we would pull that resolution out and move it to a non-consent. So basically, in the streamlined version, most of the work being done at the committees would then not have to be duplicated here, because if we are gonna be one meeting a month, just take, for example, tonight, there's no way we would've done three presentations and then I'm starting resolutions. So, under the committee system, uh, it should be streamlined because we'll get the majority of the resolutions done ahead of time, they'll be posted on the website, so that it's up there for the community, which has always been a problem for the transparency question, um, and then we wouldn't have any last-minute items, other than, obviously, something important that, that needed to change, but you wouldn't see staff attending workshop, you wouldn't see field trip, you wouldn't see contract with a, with a vendor, that's not a last-minute item that I would even think of putting back on the agenda, okay? So, that being said, um, I'm gonna go back to A, and since we weren't able to have a committee meeting, uh, for that, I'll, I'll have to kind of go through the agenda. Another thing with the agenda being put together earlier, you'll see how I have it, I mean, I've got one, well, there is a mistake that Resolution 2 and 6 are the same, and I'll make that correction on the final, uh, the final packet, but you'll see that A to 12, you know, I'm in a bunch resolutions that are similar, so, all the staff training together, followed by, in this case, all the field trips, so that the committee meetings should be able to be a little streamlined and go a little quicker, which in turn will allow the board meetings to go a little bit quicker, where you'll have more time for, obviously, the, the important issues that come before the board every month, okay? So that's an overview, uh, this is a learning experience for all of us, today's kind of practice, because we do have the open workshop, I could kind of use this as the curriculum in Personnel Committee meeting, uh, we'll review when I get to B, I'll, I'll leave it up to the finance committee to address how...
But look at the items on B, what would I say about the placement of handicapped pupils, nothing?
Well, you would say that they...
The committee remaining that they will be resolutions and they're recommending that the board attend, that's why we'll go quickly.
Takes longer for me to say that than what we were doing before, this, some of this stuff...
Needs to be talked about.
Well, I'll do it.
Well, it's not that it can't be talked about, I mean, any resolution has the right to be talked about, but, you know, obviously, it will handle it in a committee first, if a, if a member that isn't in that committee has a particular question on a resolution, please, call a member of the board that's on the committee that you have a question, or call Central Office, and we'll get all your concerns addressed ahead of time, so that the actual meeting night could have a little bit better flow to it. Now, you may find this isn't to your liking, and we're not gonna do it, but I, you know, we're gonna try it and, uh, see where we go, and, uh, you know, I do what the board wants me to, the board says, let's try it again October...
This agenda?
Well, that was the full agenda.
Right, I would think people would want to know more about that than this, and half of that is not on this, because there works in progress and they just, that's what I would've thought a chairperson might address, which you can't always do here, because some of them are contracts, some of them are, can't be discussed, so, I, I, maybe it's just that this agenda, this time, doesn't have anything that might need discussion on it, but that was what I thought would be, a report was this. Well, I think we sometimes, we run the risk, and I know people in Bayonne are pretty sensitive to the whole idea of transparency, they want to see everything happening, uh, that's my only concern. I agree, there are certain things here that, they're going to a workshop, hello, and it's, and it, it's gonna be paid by titled 2A funds or, I don't know, PEA funds, whatever, that's, that's a no-da situation, but there are issues that maybe the public need to hear, even though the committee may have decided that, yes, but there, I think there are some issues that, I don't know, that's how I feel, that...
I'm gonna answer two questions, let me go back to Mary Jane's point first.
It just doesn't look like it's on the agenda this time.
Mary Jane's looking at the agenda we used the other night from the finance meeting, which everybody doesn't have, but, there's a list of items that are pre-resolu, and I'm gonna use the term pre-resolution, they're not resolutions yet, uh, we, we spent a long time the other night on Chromebooks, uh, that isn't turned into a written resolution yet, but it will be for next week, we just didn't, you know, there's numbers that were coming in that we didn't have yet to have ready for you today, we probably won't get that actually physically to us on Monday, so there are a lot of items on there that were discussed that are getting turned into resolutions, but there are a lot of items on that from the other night that were outright resolutions I had, but that's the answer to that.
Now, I'm glad you clarified that, 'cause I don't know what resolutions you were talking about.
Well, you weren't at the meeting, that's what I'm saying, 'cause you weren't on...
Well, not on finance.
You're not on finance, but going back to your, your point, Ava, I'll say that I think we'll be more transparent, because I'll be able, not just to put the agenda on the website, I'll be able to put all the resolutions on the website, and not five minutes before a board meeting, I would hope 48 hours before a board meeting, so now the public can go on our website, go through the agenda, and there might be a resolution that they question, or have, they haven't been able to do that unless they show up the night of the meeting and look at my bulletin board.
Okay.
So I agree.
That makes sense.
Like, anything new, and Doc says, that flywheel, it's hard pushing this wheel, you know, we've been spending two weeks with different versions from other, other districts trying to streamline how we can kind of get this to work fast for us.
My complaint was that it looked too easy, I expected, I don't know, a struggle.
Oh, it's never, you know it's never...
But this is not an agenda that has anything complicated on it.
You know why? Because this, this month for finance, it's not a bad one, but what about if it was March, and we're doing budget, or December, and we're doing CAFRA, you'll have plenty, plenty of time to walk, you know, to tightrope dance, take advantage of a nice, slow month.
Maybe my ankle will heal by now.
Now, for instance, during something like, say, Mary Jane was going to speak about finance tonight, uh, she would discuss things such as, well, let's take something like this, for, for example, the, just a po, possible sale, some, that, well, the, the members of the finance committee were, you know...
Not in consensus.
Not in consensus, you know, so, and, you know, and here's the reasons why, and then you could go to Mr. Smith or whoever we'd have to go to for a certain, for a certain issue, so I, I, I think that it would be, and it would show that, you know, I think we'd hope show the public that we're not walking in here that night and looking at this the first time ourselves, that we've all received these things at home, uh, we all are in certain committees that we attend to, and, and, and the amount of discussion, Frank, as I, you said, you know, when there's a finance meeting, it's not, it's not a 15-minute meeting, I've been to them, I go to them, two hours is a short one, you know, that, usually, they're usually much more than that, so, uh, I think it gives a good point that now the members of that committee can present, you know, to the public, a little bit of what, of it.
And I think the thought is, is yes, they, they rolled up their sleeves, they spent over two hours at a committee meeting, which means we shouldn't have to have another hour and a half doing finance items tonight.
Right.
But, I mean, they did the heavy work, there could be a resolution or two that we know is gonna be a problem for everybody, pull that out, move it to non-consent, but overall, the flow should happen, you know, it should streamline a little better, all right? That being said, since we weren't able to have committee meetings for the other two, I'll start with, uh, I'll start with A, well, actually, we'll start off with a commendation...
Personnel is Monday, I believe, correct? If I'm not mistaken.
Yes, Monday.
Four o'clock.
Yes, I'll be there.
And then before we leave tonight, I will sit with the other committee members and we'll do a calendar for the rest of this year, October, November, December, just to coordinate those dates again.
Because I believe these main three, the curriculum, personnel, and finances, they're the ones that every, you know, uh, other committees such as Buildings and Grounds or so...
Is usually part of budget and finance.
Yeah, and, and, and some of them are just a little less, like, we're not gonna be talking about selling a, a lot every meeting, whereas the other topics, we would be discussing everywhere.
And then, you know, my other predicament is, I have to try and get a resolution to fit one of these three categories, so you may see something that normally wasn't in curriculum, might've been in personnel or vice versa, but we, we're all gonna work together on this and, and try and make it work as best as possible.
What about for negotiation?
Well, that's another one that probably wouldn't be brought up necessarily every month, I don't know.
Well, you can't do it out here anymore.
And we can't really discuss that out here.
And if and when that, obviously...
You can't even tell us everything.
I know, you can't. That resolution would wind up eventually going to Personnel and/or Budget anyway.
That's why you're the spokesperson for that one.
We have one commendation, uh, this year, we have a perfect score on the math SAT by Dong Yu Li, one of our, I guess he's presently a senior, he's presently a senior. Okay, so then, we'll start with A, Curriculum and Instruction, uh, you know, I'll go into them, um, A1 is a workshop, actually, I do want to read this one, yeah, let's read this one, 'cause this one, uh, doesn't happen often, we get...
Kuwait.
Yeah, this is wonderful news for Maria Loyah, who is our former Teacher of the Year, Bayonne High School, and our District Teacher of the Year, she's been requested to come to Kuwait, the state of Kuwait, to be an inspirational speaker on women in engineering, and she's requesting for, um, three days for professional development to go there, and it's at no cost, other than, I, I guess, the substitute, um, always good news from Maria Loyah, we really do want to support her, she's doing wonderful things in the Science Department, she's been the coordinator of STEM and robotics and, yeah, so we're, we're very excited about this opportunity, and we're hoping that you can support her.
Okay, so, Resolutions A, A1 to A... Okay, so, Resolutions A, A1 to A12. Are all staff to attend workshops. A6 is a duplicate. It's a duplicate of A2, so I'll make that correction and remove that. But that whole group are all staff to attend workshops?
And, other than the one, it'd be all funded by Title II-A or something like that?
A1 was no cost.
A5, that's all.
Yeah. I have right here, I'm sorry. A4, Title IV. A7 and 8 were local. And the reason why they're local is because we've always done them local in the past, so we cannot use federal funds if we have a history of using them. A9 and 10 is Title II-A, and A12 is Title II-A.
Thank you.
Okay, and included in that is the New Jersey School Board Meeting Resolution, which everybody here is taking care of. I just have two trustees I have to check on on that. A13, 14, and 15-year-old field trips. You have baseball to Orlando, Florida. You have the senior prom, and you have cheerleading to Orlando, Florida. Moving along, A16 is our curriculum unit plans for the part of the school year 16, 17, and 17, 18. 17 is our Saturday STEM, Gateway to STEM program.
And again, Directors IEL and Degen, they went and got the grant for $6,000 from the Bayonne Education Foundation. That, that's for our 7th and 8th graders, Integrated Science, Computer Science, and Mathematics. It's a Saturday program, and every student that applies will have a seat.
Then I have a group of resolutions, Contract with Foundation for Educational Administration. This is all for staff development. Beyond Gender Identity, How to Investigate Harassment, Role of Nurses, Grief in the Schoolhouse, Student Confidentiality.
So these, these resolutions are for our Staff Training and Development Days, the full days, paid out of 18, 19, paid out of Title IV, the new money. 21, sorry, 20, II-A. 21, Title IV. 22, II-A. 24, PEA. And 25 and 6 out of the Title II-A. Again, it's for New Jersey Student Learning Standards to support staff instruction.
Next up, 23 is a contract. This is for in-home parent training, one of our staff members. 24 is High Scope Educational Research Foundation, and this is for also professional development. And then 25 and 26 are also both staff development workshops.
What's High Scope, Dr. Degen?
High Scope is the curricula for the pre-K. So this is the training that they will receive, our pre-K teachers, on September 29.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So the Curriculum Committee would move in second and accept, and, boy, look at that, we're done already. Okay, so, I'll go back to Budget and Finance now. B1, our money received is our normal resolution every month. Right now, our reports is only the repair, repair report that was sent to you by Liz on, on your email. Claims and accounts for the month. And then we have a series of placement of handicapped pupils. A question came up at the Finance meeting about could we bundle some of these resolutions together in a van or a small bus? And Mr. Smith is looking into that. And that was a question that came out of the meeting the other night. Possibly we could do this transportation on our own, so...
B5, B6, and I think B9 and B11.
We've been asking that.
B5 is a residential, though. We don't transport those students. That's for them to be at the place residentially.
Okay.
Yes, we've been asking, but I...
We've been asking this for years, for a couple of years.
It's B6 then, and...
I think what happened this time is that there are actually multiple people going to...
The same place?
Simp, yeah.
On a route, on the route.
Which doesn't happen generally.
One of it is 166, and the other one is 230. And then, I think we were gonna ask that question to Bob. So can we actually do that, Bob? Can we use our bus?
Well, we can, we have to ask that inside.
Inside.
We'll, we'll continue that conversation inside. Moving ahead, B12 is Emergency Transportation. We're responsible for two homeless students that are residing in Newark. And that's, okay. B13 was the PEA aid. All right, this is being accepted, $770,982. It will serve 65 full-day general ed preschool children in the 2017-18 school year. B14 is an addendum to a contract, transportation that we did. It includes an addition of pickup twice a week. That wasn't on the original. And Mercer County, same thing. We're, there's a resident home in Ewing. We're responsible for the student that is there. And then finally, B16, Educational Services Commission. This is for our non-public...
This is to provide services to after-school programs. These are students that are on the F1 visa program. It's immigrant money, it's for any student between 3 and 21, first time enrolled in a school in the United States. The commission is the vendor that handles that.
B13. We did lose 450 grand, so this is not, not completely all new money, although you can't commingle them anyway, but it's still to be remembered, we still lost 450 grand in another component.
I'm not understanding what you just said. Remember, last...
Yeah, go ahead. I, I, what, you know, what Mary Jane was saying was that, don't forget, when the budget came back from the state to us, they also took almost $500,000 away from preschool. And now they're giving us this money, but we already lost...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So it isn't, like, we're getting...
It's not all new money.
It's not all this money, it's, yeah, it's minus $500,000.
Yeah, but the 500 didn't come out of the PEA, correct?
No, no, no. No, that's why I say you can't commingle, but we still lost that money.
Yeah, but we also talked inside, if we lost that money, how are we keeping that program to the same exact size? And then the other program we're adding, we're using the maximum.
Pete, could I just...
Yes.
So it's not as straightforward kind of as losing and gaining money.
No.
It was like a triangle. Three years ago, it went up by 400,000 in 17, and then went back down, and went back down in 18. So we did, we gained 400,000 approximately numbers, approximate numbers...
For a year.
In 17, from 16. Then we came back down in 18. They're both self-funding programs. So it did hurt year over year, because we were charging more administrative costs to the grant. You know, 18 compared to 17 for that particular program. The PEA is a new program, so, you know, it's, with these grants, it's a little... So yes, it does hurt compared to last year, but it's transparent to the state. They could see what we're charging administratively, and they could know we could run that program without, 'cause it was a fairly high administrative charges that were going through the grant. So, it's a little more complicated than, but, that's the story.
Any other comments from anyone on the Finance Committee that wanted anything else? No? If not, I'll move along to Personnel. C1 is a list of communications of either resignations or retirements. There, there are some additions from the packet that I sent through your emails, so you do wanna look at C1. C2 and C3 are from Inside. C4 is a list of personnel of community ed. That has not changed from what we received at home. But I do have to ask you to look at C5, Coaches and Advisor, because that, there was a revision to that. Please don't ask me what the revision was. Is that what you did?
What, on C5?
Why don't we just take a look at C5?
Something's involved.
No.
I apologize about...
That's all right. But you could take a look at, it's that time of year where we're starting to fill a lot of our student productions. Cheerleading, basketball. Next, I'm sorry, trustee, next resolution. Six?
Okay.
Five.
Oh, five, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll wait just in case anyone has any questions. Then we'll start with C6. This is Personnel Parent Workshops. C7 is Personnel with Title I. Sure.
Now, this had, they did this last year, how, we, does this work out pretty well, on C6?
So we have to reserve 1% set aside from Title I's. So it's about $35,000 that we have to show the public that we're providing parent outreach. So, I, we talked about the website, we talked about the Parent Resource Center, we talked about this orientation. And then what I do is I request that every school at least does a minimum of three parent workshops throughout the year. Basically, what this does, President Broderick, is this gives them a letter of intent that they're eligible to do the workshop that they're on the list. We can always add to that, it's only decides later in the year that they wanna do something to avoid the summer slide or a math workshop, that wants the letter of intent in. That's the backup for the auditor, so the auditor knows that, that they have a letter of intent, they're getting paid.
All right, thank you.
I have a record of all the workshops and the titles that have been...
But I'm saying, are they well-received? I'm just wondering if we ever get any feedback on these.
We do, we do have to provide feedback. Is it a good parent? No, not really, not that much. But we have to still provide it. We've tried in the morning, we've tried at lunch, we've tried at school, we've tried at night. We do publicize it. It's not the best attendance. There are some that are better than others, but...
I mean, it seems like a good purpose, it just, I wish that we'd get more people to go.
No, which one I like, it's, I, I don't know if it's part and parcel of this, but you sent home a Title I newsletter. That, that's, that's very informative. I like that.
Yes, that, that is part, I should've mentioned that, with the parent set aside. That's the Title I times, and building better readers. Yes, we do provide that also once a month.
I do some of those activities with myself sometimes.
You ever see the calendar on the back? Today, make a bookmark.
Right.
Yes, so that is part of this, this set aside.
I'm so bored, that's why I do that, I make a bookmark.
You'll be getting it soon.
It's really good, though, I like that newsletter.
Thank you.
C7, we're adding additional personnel to Title I program and their salaries. And you'll see there's two staff members. C8 is, you'll see the highlighted names, additional or revised personnel, data analysis.
Just a quick question. I know, I don't know if it's appropriate for out here, but the people that we added on the Title I, are they, are they from the RIF list?
No, we can say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
C9 is Curriculum Writing, additional names, and you'll see there the highlighted names.
Math and Science, three names.
C10, you don't have the names yet, but that is for our Literacy, uh, Literacy Boost, Hundred Book Challenge. We, we will have names in there hopefully by next week. C11 is Project Innovate After School. You see a list of staff members in the schools. And then C12 is Official Translators, and it's Arabic. C13 is Additional Home Instruction Staff. C14, Parent Workshops. And you'll see it's Native Language Family Literacy Parent Workshop, Arabic and Latino. Next up, C15, Personnel After School Tutoring. Then we have Personnel to the Bayonne Housing Authority Homework Assistance Program. Then we have Personnel to After School Professional Learning Communities. And then, C18 is our Self-Assessment Grades of our schools in our district. And then, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is it a self-assessment that needs to be submitted to the state each year? Not only will it be submitted by September 30th, after they are approved hopefully on the 27th, we will have them on each of our school websites. And again, that's a mandate from the state.
And then C19, which will be for Inside. All right, so that is it for the resolutions I have outside. Superintendent, that's all I have left. Okay? If not, then we will...
Nothing here.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will adjourn for a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items. We will not return, it is 8:12.